Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 6th Planning Commission Meeting. I will call the meeting to order, and can we start with a roll call, please?
Chair Berman.
Present.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Present.
Commissioner Godwin.
Present.
Vice Chair Hauser.
Present.
Commissioner Lille.
Present.
Commissioner Wright.
Here.
And on to the salute to the flag, Commissioner Lille, do you mind leading? Thank you. So harmonious. Thanks, Commissioner Lille. Before we get into administrative business, I will ask if there's any public comments on the administrative business that we have on our agenda tonight. And as a reminder, if you're calling in, there is a dial-in option for making public comments at tonight's Planning Commission meeting. The phone number is (650) 898-6965. And once you're dialed in, the conference ID number is (383) 609-442. And when you get into the meeting, press the pound key. And to raise your hand, press star five. And to unmute yourself, press star six. Is there anyone on the phone tonight?
We have no callers present.
All right. I will close the public comment on the administrative business and move on to approval of the Order of Agenda. Commissioner, or Vice Chair Hauser.
Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the Order of the Agenda.
Thank you. And is there a second? Commissioner Ferguson.
I second the motion.
Motion and a second, please vote.
That motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. Now on to approval of the minutes, and we have two minutes before us tonight. There's the meeting minutes from December 19th, 2022, and the meeting minutes from January 17th, 2023. If there's any comments, I think we could take the comments for both of those at the same time. I do have a comment. I believe in the minutes for January 17th, there was some mention of my attendance, but I was actually out sick for that meeting, so I was not in attendance.
Thank you, Chair Berman. We'll locate where that is and make the appropriate adjustment.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on the meeting minutes? Or would someone like to make a motion to approve either one or the other or both? Vice Chair Hauser.
Thank you, Chair. Just to clarify Chair Berman's comment, there are also places where I'm labeled as chair instead of vice chair, so maybe there can be more of just a quick QA QC on that. And with that, I would like to make a motion to approve both minutes.
Thank you for that motion. Is there a second? Commissioner Godwin.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, please vote.
That motion passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you. All right, on to designation of liaison to City Council meeting. So we require a liaison for the February 13th, 2023 City Council meeting, and this is on the short-term rental ordinance. Do we have some background on the liaison request?
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Planning Director Christian Murdock. The item requiring a liaison to City Council is introduction of an ordinance to impose a cap and make other minor administrative amendments to the city's short-term rental zoning regulations. The Planning Commission considered that ordinance on January 17th and voted to recommend approval with additional suggestions for a future ordinance that the City Council should consider, so the liaison would attend the City Council meeting to represent the Planning Commission's deliberation and recommendation on that item.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. Are there any questions for staff on the request for the liaison, or perhaps do we have any volunteers? Commissioner Ferguson.
I volunteer to be the liaison. Nobody else wants it.
Thank you, Commissioner Ferguson. And I believe if a second commissioner, or even third maximum, at that point wants to attend as well, that's allowed.
I have a question for Christian.
Go ahead.
Is there a benefit to the Planning Commission to have more than one person there?
Perhaps to provide a more full summation of what the Planning Commission discussed. It was a lengthy public hearing, so, you know, multiple liaisons could potentially recall aspects or facets of that discussion that, you know, a single liaison may not recall. However, there's no requirement, and certainly a single liaison is the standard for Planning Commission liaisons to City Council.
Thank you.
All right, not seeing any other lights. Thank you, Commissioner Ferguson, for volunteering. All right, on to oral communications. This portion of the agenda is available to the public to address the Planning Commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. The time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes. And I do have a comment card, and I'll call you up momentarily, but for those on the line, if anyone has called in, please dial in at (1650) 898-6965. Conference ID is (383) 609-442, and hit pound. Then to raise your hand, press star five. And then when your name is called, press star six to unmute yourself. In the meantime, can we have Jack Burgett? Or Bridget? I'm sorry.
Do I push this button?
Oh, no, you could speak into the mic.
For three minutes?
And please state your name for the record.
Great. Honorable Chair and honorable commissioners, my name is Jack Burgett. I'm President of the North Coast County Water District Board of Directors. I am here this evening as a liaison from the district's board to observe the meeting. However, since I'm here, I wanted to provide comments on behalf of myself. You may have heard the Water District has been working to upgrade its aging headquarters facility on Francisco Boulevard. The administrative building, which houses the sole hub of Pacifica's water operations, was constructed in 1961. It's outdated and is in need of structural safety and accessibility improvements. The district has been working very hard on this project, and we are excited about the improvements that will be made to enhance the safety of its employees and customers, and to increase the efficiency of its facility in order to improve water service to the community and to the city of Pacifica for future generations. This project will not only improve operations for the Water District, but it will also provide visual and functional improvements to the neighborhood. We pride ourselves on being good neighbors in Sharp Park, and are excited to contribute to the growing vibrancy of this neighborhood. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Currently, I have no other public comment cards. If anyone else has a public comment for oral communications, which are items that are not on the agenda tonight, please fill out a card in the back and submit it to staff over here on your left. In the meantime, has anyone called in?
We have no callers at this time.
All right. Then I will close oral communications and move on to consent items, which we have none. And now to new public hearings. So the first item for new public hearings on our agenda tonight is file number 2022-020, Specific Plan SP 17822. To reconfigure the front entry of an existing townhouse, reconstruct a 252-square-foot sunroom into a family room, and remodel interior space to an existing condominium unit located at 223 Roberts Road, Assessor Parcel Number 022120180. Recommended SEQA action is exempt under SEQA Class 1 Categorical Exemption, SEQA Guidelines Section 15301. Recommended action is approve as conditioned. Can we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair. Assistant Planner Katie Snodgrass will make the presentation.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Katie Snodgrass with the Planning Division, and I'll be presenting Item 1 on tonight's agenda, File Number 2022-020. The project site has a general plan designation of low-density residential and a zoning designation of planned development and hillside preservation districts. The project site is one of the nine-unit Dolphin Point condominiums located at 223 Roberts Road, bounded by Roberts Road and State Highway 1. The Dolphin Point condominium project development plan and specific plan were approved in 1980. The specific plan was then amended in 1983 to decrease the amount of site coverage from 100% to 96% of the maximum allowable site coverage, in addition to altering the roof style, reducing the building height, and changing the driveway access. The 1989 specific plan amendment included the sunroom addition to the subject unit, as well as deck extensions to the lower decks, bedroom expansions to three other units, and a third-floor bedroom addition to Unit 221 Roberts Road. In addition to the 1989 specific plan amendment, a variance was approved to allow the project site to exceed the maximum allowable site coverage by 8%. In 1996, planning staff determined the enclosure of the existing 252-square-foot second-story deck was a minor amendment, which was approved by the planning administrator. Staff noted that any substantial deviation from the proposed solarium design would require Planning Commission review. The proposed project consists of three components: reconfiguring the front entry, reconstructing the solarium, and remodeling the interior space. The project proposes the reconfiguration of the 45-degree angled front entryway with a wall that follows the existing plane of the front elevation. This site change would add 6 square foot of floor area to the subject unit. The project proposes the reconstruction of the solarium to a room with exterior walls and a roof due to the reported issues of water intrusion. This change would add approximately 252 square feet of floor area to the subject unit, but the current development standards are not changing with this action. The third and final component of the proposed project consists of a remodel of the interior space, which would enlarge the kitchen into the existing breakfast nook, add a family room to the existing sunroom, relocate the mudroom, convert the half-bath into a full bath, and replace the spiral staircase with existing stairs. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission finds the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, approves the specific plan SP 17822 by adopting the resolution included as Attachment B to the staff report, including conditions of approval in Exhibit A of the resolution, and incorporates all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
Thank you. We'll have some questions, I'm sure, from the Planning Commission, but in the meantime, if you are here in person to speak on this agenda item, please fill out a comment card from the back and then provide it to staff here on your left. Thank you. All right, any questions from the commission? Commissioner Hauser.
Thank you, Chair. I thought that this was a well-written staff report, and the staff report was very clear. I did have some questions about the drawings, because there weren't a lot of labels, so I want to make sure that I'm fully understanding what was being proposed. On A 0.2, which is the rendering sheet, and I'm, yeah, that's, I don't know if you're able to pull it up, but essentially in the plans on A 0.2, the rendering that they're providing, that's what's being proposed, right? I just want to make sure I'm clear.
Yes. This image shows the existing solarium with the added exterior walls and the roof.
Okay, so this is the enclosed solarium?
Yes.
And then on the bottom, there's one of the garage, and that's the existing garage with no changes being proposed, right?
Yeah. It's the existing garage, and then to the right of that is the proposed entryway, which will be parallel to the garage. It's currently at a 45-degree angle.
Okay. And then A 4.2 are all labeled as existing elevations, but those are also proposed elevations, right? I just, again, would like to be 100% clear.
The elevations aren't changing.
Elevations aren't changing. Okay, because the fenestration seems, it's a fully glass solarium currently, but it's going to be enclosed stucco walls, or siding walls, actually, with windows. Okay, so A 4.2 is the proposed. Okay, that's all I needed. Thank you very much for those clarifications.
Any other questions for staff from the commission? Commissioner Lille? Or Commissioner Wright? Sorry.
I was wondering if you had a chance to go by the site, and if the existing plan represents what's actually there.
I did not have an opportunity to visit the site.
Okay, thank you. And I was, also would like to propose to the commission that we consider doing a recommendation to the Building Department on the review, because the live load calculations for a deck, for a solarium, and for interior space are three completely different things. I'm sure that they're professional in doing their job, but I would just like to remind them of that.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Perhaps could you bring your comment up again when we get to deliberation, just so staff could take note of it again? And then we'll incorporate it into the motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? All right, seeing no lights, I'll ask if the applicant is here. All right. Now is your opportunity to speak. You will have 10 minutes. You are able to reserve three of those minutes for rebuttal after public comment, if you wish.
Thank you. I'm Stuart Grunow, architect. Marilyn and Curtis Lum are here as well. Really, staff did a great job of describing the project. It was a, started off as a simple interior remodel, just to update the space. And as an architect, one of my primary concerns is water intrusion, and there's two spaces within the project, the sunroom and the solarium. Specifically, the solarium, being one of those aluminum and glass structures, we had to address that first and foremost. So the question was, should we replace it, or should we replace it with something more sustainable, more permanent for the homeowners, the building complex, and the community? So that's how we went down the path of trying to make a more permanent structure, rather than replacing it with an aluminum and glass structure. The, the front sunroom, it's hard to even tell that it was a sunroom solarium addition. I brought some pictures of the interior. It really looks like an interior space, just with some skylights. And then when we decided to address the skylights that were also leaking, we thought it prudent to address the entry, because the, the current entry is at a 45-degree angle to a wall, which is probably not to current Egress code anyways. So we just straightened that out and made it much more functional with a canopy above it. And I think overall, it's going to be a much better structure for the owners, the complex, and for the community moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. And while the applicant is on the podium, do we have any questions for the applicant? All right, that's it for now. We'll call you back up if we have questions.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Now I will open public comment on this agenda item. And again, if you're in person and would like to provide a comment, please fill out a comment card and provide it to staff. If you're calling in, or listening live, you can call in by dialing (650) 898-6965. And the conference ID is (383) 609-442, pound. To raise your hand, press star five. When you're called upon, press star six to unmute yourself. And you'll be called upon by using the last four digits of your phone number. Are there any call-in?
We have no callers.
I'll wait a couple seconds. Still no callers? All right. I'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission for deliberation. Vice Chair Hauser.
Sure. You know, I don't take issue with any of the designs proposed. I appreciate that the architect has included the amount of fenestration that he has to replace something that's primarily glass, and I think straightening out the entry makes a lot of sense. That entry is very interesting. So I don't have any sort of issue supporting this.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hauser. Commissioner Wright.
Yes, a quick question for Christian. What kind of motion, in addition to the staff report, would you suggest to get the Building Department to make sure that they do the calculations?
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. A motion to approve the project would include an additional condition of approval. Potential language that staff prepared reads as follows: Prior to issuance of a building permit, the building official shall review the change in loads placed on the foundation system as a result of the conversion of the solarium to a permanent addition, to ensure any necessary structural improvements are included to achieve compliance with the California Building Code.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright and Director Murdock. Any other questions, comments, or perhaps a motion? Commissioner Wright.
I'd like to propose that we approve with the amend in as so stated by Christian.
Is that sufficient, or do we need to read out the motion?
Just to clarify to the maker of the motion, it is to adopt staff's recommendation as stated by staff. Is that correct with the amendment as the Planning Director provided?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Chair Hauser?
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second, please vote.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, and thank you for the applicant/architect for being present. All right, on to our second public hearing for tonight. This is file number 2022-026, variance PV 53022, and tree permit TP 2-22, for demolition of two existing sheds and a single-car garage, and construction of a new two-car attached garage at an existing single-family residence located at 455 Rockaway Beach Avenue, Assessor Parcel Number 022034040. The recommended SEQA action is Class 1 and Class 3 Categorical Exemptions, and per SEQA Guidelines, Section 15301 and 15303. And the recommended action is approve with conditions. Can we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Katie Snodgrass with the Planning Division, and I'll be presenting Item 2 on tonight's agenda, File Number 2022-026. The project site has a general plan designation of low-density residential and a zoning designation of single-family residential. The project site consists of an existing atypical 5,563-square-foot single home in the Rockaway Beach neighborhood at 455 Rockaway Beach Avenue, bounded by Rockaway Beach Avenue and Buell Avenue. This site includes an existing 1,093-square-foot single-family residence, a 120-square-foot shed, and an 83-square-foot shed. This site also includes a non-conforming 220-square-foot single-car garage. Three protected trees occur on the project site within 50 feet of regulated work, including a 40-inch diameter Monterey Cypress, a 42-inch Monterey Cypress, and a 53-inch Monterey Pine. The project proposes the removal of the two existing sheds, the non-conforming single-car garage, and the concrete walkway. The project proposes the construction of a new two-car attached garage, a fence, and landscaping. The project prompts the need for two permits, a variance and a tree permit. The proposed two-car attached garage requires a variance to deviate from the 20-foot front garage setback to 12 feet and 2 inches, and the 20-foot side-street garage setback to 9 feet and 3 inches. The tree permit is needed for the removal of the 53-inch Monterey Pine. The applicant's arborist determined the Monterey Pine cannot be preserved and protected during planning and construction, and recommended the immediate removal of the tree due to very poor health. The tree permit recommendation was unintentionally omitted from the staff report, but the staff report contains the findings and the discussion for the tree removal. Therefore, staff recommends the following revised motion of approval. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission finds the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, approves variance PV-530-22, and tree permit TP-2-22 by adopting the attached resolution, including conditions of approval in Exhibit A, and incorporates all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? All right, seeing no lights, I'll ask if the applicant is present and would like to speak. You could step up to the podium. And you have 10 minutes. If you wish, you could reserve three of those minutes for rebuttal after public comment. And later, we could also elect to call you back to the podium for any questions.
Good evening there, Commissioners. My name is Will Revlock. I'm an architect, and I'm proposing that they remove these two non-conforming sheds and tear down the existing garage and build a nice slab-on-grade attached garage to the house. If this was a square piece or rectangle piece of property, there probably wouldn't be any need for any kind of variances. We would fit it right onto the site. But this is an unusual pie-shaped property, and therefore, we're trying to utilize the best building that we can within the spaces in there. I do have some existing and proposed, you saw it in the rendering, I'm going to just pass this on.
This was, this is what you have on your web or your cameras, and this is there now, and this gentleman was there earlier. Thank you very much for seeing that. And you have this rendering here. So we're trying to just do this to that. So, we're trying to just do this to that. Pretty simple. I have a structural engineer to do the calculations.
The owners also, with our planners, spent thousands of dollars. Anyway, had an arborist go out there and look at this tree at the corner. And I do have a picture of it. Maybe I should show you that, too. Is, um, his strong recommendation was to remove it because it was ill-fated. He was disease-infested, and he wanted...
To not preserve or just help the, um, not to contaminate the other trees. I'm not sure, not an arborist, but that's trees in the shed, sat shape.
Um, basically, that's it. It's just trying to build a nice garage so they could put their cars in there and their stuff in the shed into the garage. Is there any questions? That's pretty, uh, I need to say.
Thank you. And thank you for bringing the images. I believe all of these images are already in the staff report.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Vice Chair Hauser?
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation and for the visuals. I just wanted to ask if you could, and I understand that you're not the arborist, but if you could just speak to what the tree replacement plan is for the tree that's being removed?
Let's see. I think we're going to, did you have any particular tree that you wanted to use? Oh, Will.
And it's a one-to-one mitigation that's being proposed?
Yes.
Chair Berman?
Yep.
Planning Director Christian Murdock. I do want to note that the tree protection ordinance does not require replacement plantings for removal of trees that are not healthy trees. This one has been assessed as in very poor condition, as an unhealthy tree. So, the staff's analysis did not include any requirement to replant in the report or in the conditions of approval. So, if the commission does feel a replacement planting is appropriate, it should consider adding a condition of approval to that effect and provide some parameters as to the number, any guidance on the placement, but providing some flexibility, hopefully, for staff to implement that postapproval, if that's the direction the commission wants to go.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. Commissioner Wright?
I have a vague recollection of a three-to-one replacement under the current heritage tree. Is that true?
Sort of. So, the prior heritage tree ordinance did not have any required replacement ratio. Over time, as a matter of practice, the city council, in several instances, required a three-to-one replacement ratio. But the adopted tree protection ordinance that replaced the heritage tree ordinance has a two-to-one replacement ratio, not a three-to-one replacement ratio.
Thank you.
And to clarify, for the removal of healthy trees, not dead trees or unhealthy trees.
Commissioner Godwin?
Yeah, I guess this one's for Planning Director Murdock. As we have planned on more ADUs and other things, this particular neighborhood has got 20-foot setback requirements. And it seems to me that they're fairly incompatible with adding more accessory dwelling unit-type places to existing lots. So, do you anticipate that more and more times that the setbacks might be relaxed, as is being requested by this applicant?
So, Commissioner Godwin, I would draw a distinction between the setbacks applicable to accessory dwelling units and the setbacks applicable to garages, whether attached or detached. They're classified as accessory buildings, which is different in the zoning code from accessory dwelling units. And so, I can't speculate on whether the city council may change the setbacks at some point in the future for accessory dwelling units. However, under the current code, the side and rear setbacks, in most cases, would be four feet for an accessory dwelling unit and as little as 18 inches for side and rear setbacks for many accessory dwellings, or for many accessory buildings, such as detached garages. The issue in this case is the front setback, which for garages is 20 feet, whether on the front or on the street side. And I'm not aware of any plan at this time to reduce that setback. The primary intention is to provide parking in the driveway. And so, a shorter setback would affect the ability of a car to park in a driveway in those circumstances.
That summarizes it for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Godwin. I do have a question for the applicant. And perhaps you could help speak for perhaps the arborist. But understanding that this project is not required to replace the unhealthy tree that will be removed, I know you are electing to replace one tree. I'm wondering if there is room on the site and feasibility to add a second tree to match the replacement ordinance?
Right now, there's two existing trees that are going to stay. And this third tree is, I think, in the right-of-way of the city. Christian just pointed out that since it's a dead or very poor-held tree, that if we removed it, you didn't have to replace it. There was no intention of replacing unless it was going to be at that spot. But, um, I could ask you, would you want to replace that tree?
I'm so sorry to interrupt you, but if you don't mind, can you come to the podium to provide your response? Thank you.
Yes, this is the owner of the property.
M.O.N., please state your name, please.
Hello, Daniella Devine. Thank you. The bigger issue is the power line, which is exactly why the tree has been hacked away. PG&E has been maintaining that tree. You can see that the power line is, in fact, not even straight up. It is veering towards the hazardous tree. So, my bigger issue, I'm not against a replacement of doing an extra tree, if that's what it takes. But it doesn't seem to make sense, and it doesn't seem to be the most logical decision based on the fact that that power line is there and is already being very poorly attended to. I would fear that any sort of tree, in addition to even one-to-one replacement, would incur additional expense on our part because of the power line and additional issues with PG&E, as we have faced for years.
Thank you. A follow-up question on that. Understanding that it's probably not smart to replace, put a new tree in the same location, is there any other location on the property that there could be room for a second new tree?
Absolutely. We had intentions of putting a couple of trees, and we've been looking at different species that would make the most sense. We have a very long fence line along the back, which provides for lots of parking and lots of room for extra trees.
So, then I guess in that case, and I'd like to hear from fellow commissioners, if the commission does wish to have your project add a second tree to be consistent with the tree replacement ordinance, understanding that it's totally voluntary, would you be amenable to that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for the applicant? Oh, Commissioner Wright?
Yes. When I was there, I noticed a number of other, like, racks and other similar kind of structures. And then I looked at this nice rendering, especially blown up. And this looks fantastic. So, I'm very pleased about that. But is this going to give you sufficient space for all that other stuff?
Well, we have a lot of work to do. I actually brought some other pictures, which really show the true nature of our lot, which, quite frankly, it's dilapidated. And we have built extra structures and extra shelving to contain our lives. We have a lot of work to do, and that's really what this project is about. This project is about completely turning around our lot. And whatever doesn't fit in that two-car garage is gone, which is sort of the joy of the project. So, yes. Again, I do have some true-to-form pictures here in my hand that will really offer you a true representation of what is currently there. And that rendering is a true representation of where we intend to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the owner-applicant? All right. Thank you, and we may call you back for more questions. All right. And now, I'm going to prepare to open public comment for this item. As a reminder, if you're here in person and would like to make a comment, please fill out a card and provide it to staff. And if you're calling in, please call in to phone number (650) 898-6965. And the conference ID is (383) 609-442-POUND. Once you're in the conference room, you can raise your hand by pressing star five. And once you're called upon using the last four digits of your phone number, press star six to unmute. All right. We'll give the folks on the phone some time. In the meantime, I do have one in-person comment card for Mr. Michael Cronin.
My name is Michael Cronin, for the record. I'm the neighbor three doors down to the west at 500 Rockaway Beach Avenue. I'm here to express my full support of this project as planned for a variety of reasons. And I think, you know, I believe Commissioner Hauser kind of brought up, you know, the reconsideration of variances in this neighborhood for a variety of reasons. The first thing is, we do have narrow streets in that neighborhood. And, you know, with the creek, especially like behind my property and the variety of those, it makes the setbacks a little bit more challenging. The majority of the homes on the street, whether it's garage or accessory dwelling, as you guys, your technical term, expresses, it makes it more difficult. And a lot of them are already kind of pushed further into the setback already. So, it's not like them asking for variance really violates the genre of the neighborhood in that case. It kind of, you know, and the variance process, in my opinion, provides kind of undue process and additional costs. I know it's the rules and they get a play-by, but I urge you guys to, you know, move on to the city council to reconsider these things because it is slowing things down, especially for accessory dwelling units and other things in the neighborhood. The topography and the lot shapes obviously create a challenge as well. So, another reason to do it. Getting to the tree, that thing's a fire danger. I have an insurance firm in San Francisco, essentially, that, and I've seen over the last few years especially, it's getting harder and harder for people to get insurance. Especially in our neighborhood, we're within, you know, like 600 yards of high brush. So, insurance companies don't like it. So, the more, if we have a significant fire event here, it's going to make it harder. So, the more we can get trees away from those power lines, the better off we're going to be as a whole from an emergency preparation thing. In addition, it create, the tree in that location in that corner kind of creates a lack of visibility, both for people walking. And we don't have sidewalks in the neighborhood. I think on our block, I think we're up to like five kids now, under the age of like four. So, I look at that and go, I think it's probably good to have visibility there than, instead of the tree. I mean, I see you guys are set on maybe replacing these trees. But given, you know, kind of where it is and that thing, you know, I don't see that as something. In addition, the setback, I know you guys have your concerns of that. Parking a car directly in front of it, it's a two-car garage. You'll be able to park parallel in front of that. So, I don't see a concern for that either. But these are just my thoughts, feelings, and reactions. You guys are entitled to your own. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any call-ins?
We have no callers at this time.
All right. Then I will close public comment and bring it back to the commission. Vice Chair Hauser?
So, I fully support the proposal. And I'd like to add two conditions if the commission will work with me with these. So, I do think we should do a two-to-one tree replacement anywhere on the property at the applicant's deciding and with staff confirming that the species is within our ordinance parameters. And then I'd like to make sure, I mean, clearly, that's an unsafe tree. Like, it's in the lines. It's clearly, you know, the arborist's report is very clear. I do, however, think it's necessary to do a nesting bird survey if the tree is removed during the nesting season, which is now, right? So, I think that that's something that whenever we have a tree that's being removed, that condition should be automatically a part of our conditions.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hauser. And actually, I support your added condition for the tree replacement being two trees. However, I would, understanding that this site is very uniquely shaped, I'd like to ask that it's under the review of the city arborist? Because it, understanding there are a few large trees that probably take up their own root system footprint, I'd hate for us to mandate the project to add a second tree when it impairs some of the existing trees. So, under the discretion of the city arborist. Commissioner Wright?
I too support the concept and the thought of replacing the trees. With the uniqueness of this lot shape, I do foresee some difficulties. I'm a little bit concerned that if we force them to put in two trees of that selected type, that may create some issues with the wires, which could be a problem. So, I would be more in favor of one tree that's off the selected list and one of their choice. Additionally, I have a quick question for staff. Did staff consider the sightlines on the road when you're driving around that triangle of the new fence? And will you foresee any issues with that as the two people come together, coming off those two different streets?
Commissioner Wright, we haven't done a site safety triangle analysis of that location. The project proposed no tree replantings, and it also proposed removal of structures that were there. So, those would only serve to increase visibility. If the commission were to require other improvements in that area, we may need to undertake that analysis.
I just wanted to understand if some analysis of that had been done?
None had, based on the nature of the proposed project.
And you're comfortable with it, the way the proposal is?
I think the removal of this very large tree there and replacement with one or two, for the foreseeable future, smaller trees, is not likely to exacerbate any site safety considerations. I don't have any data to indicate whether the tree that's there now does present visibility or safety hazard. But removal of the tree would only, I think, serve to improve visibility, whereas replanting and the mature growth of those trees at some point might diminish that safety.
And one more quick question for the applicant. So, is the new proposed fence replacing the existing fence line in the same location?
You're free to come up to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Ryan Devine, owner. The new fence line, I believe, is going to be in line with the existing fence line. And it's just the removal of the tree. So, we would be just encompassing our yard space for our children. That is all. If that answered your question?
Thank you, yes.
Thank you. I'd like to add a point of clarification. I, at least myself, do not think it's a good idea to put any new tree in the same proximity of the existing tree being removed. I agree with the concerns that Commissioner Wright mentioned. And a large enough tree would likely impact the stopping sight distance and sightlines at that intersection. So, I don't think that's the right spot for a new tree. But I do support Vice Chair Hauser's recommended condition, given that the city arborist believes it's feasible. And I'll go ahead and add, the Public Works Director believes it's... And I'll go ahead and add, the public works director believes it's feasible and safe to add a second tree to the conditions.
Vice Chair Hauser?
So, thank you, Chair. So hearing kind of what everyone is saying, I actually, I think what I am hearing and what is making sense to me is to kind of amend my original thought, which is, I still think we absolutely need to have the nesting bird survey. And I do want to have a one, I'm going to, instead of a two-to-one, I'll amend to a one-to-one replacement. But I do also want to make sure that the species is a non-invasive species, or whatever selected is reviewed by staff, to make sure that it's consistent with the trees that our ordinance would think are appropriate. So that's my clarification as far as, and then I'll just remove the second tree unless anyone has.
So Chairman Berman, we've come up with language for two potential conditions of approval, reflecting the commission's discussion thus far. The first would be, as volunteered by the applicant, prior to issuance of a building permit, applicant shall submit a tree planting plan that indicates at least one but not more than two replacement trees of a species, placement, and size consistent with the requirements of Title IV, Article 12 of the Pacific Administrative Code. For review and approval of the planning director in consultation with the city arborist, the replacement trees shall be installed prior to a final inspection. And the second condition would read, reflective of applicant's existing legal obligation under state and federal law, applicant shall obtain a nesting bird survey prepared by a qualified biologist prior to removal or substantial limb removal of any tree on the project site.
Those sound great to me. Vice Chair Hauser?
For the first condition, I think if you say at least one, I don't think there's any reason to say but not more, because if they want to plant more trees in the future, I don't think we should prohibit them from doing that accidentally.
Well, I'll note that the considerations in the tree protection ordinance include the number of trees a site can suitably contain, and so there may be a desire not to have more than a certain number of trees added, but I can modify that language if the commission would like.
I think if we say at least one, then it's one or more. And I'm ready to make a motion if no one else has comments.
Commissioner Wright?
I'd be interested to know if the applicant has an opinion of the amendment that's being proposed.
I'm sorry.
Do you have an opinion about the amendment that's being proposed?
No, I'm all for the planting of trees. In fact, I originally had a permit to cut down all those trees because they're a detriment to our house, and I do not like cutting down trees, so I saved them. We only cut down the trees that we needed to, and PG&E has taken it upon themselves to mercilessly butcher this one on the corner that I wanted to hopefully have one day for our kids to have a tree house or something like that, like I did when I was a kid. So I'm all for it. I'll plant whatever trees we need to. I definitely agree with replanting one in that location. I'd just like to review what type of trees you would permit that would be advisable to plant in this area. You know, my wife and I had discussed a willow tree, redwoods. Like I said, willing to plant more than one if we need to.
It was my understanding that you wouldn't be bound to that location, but...
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Seeing no other lights, Vice Chair Hauser, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I move, sorry, make it bigger, my i-state is going. I move that the Planning Commission finds the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, approves variance PV-530-22, and tree permit TP-2-22 by adopting the attached resolution, including conditions of approval as amended in Exhibit A, and incorporates all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
Did you mention the addition of the conditions mentioned by Director Murdock?
I did.
Okay, sorry. Blanked. All right. Do we have a second? Commissioner Wright?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second? Please vote.
That motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations, and thank you to the owner and architect for being present tonight.
Thank you, council, staff.
Before we move on to communications, I'm going to go ahead and read this. Anyone aggrieved by the action of the Planning Commission has 10 calendar days to appeal the decision in writing to city council. If any of the above actions are challenged in court, issues which may be raised are limited to those raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Judicial review of any city administrative decision may be had only if a petition is filed with the court, not later than the 90th day following the date upon which the decision becomes final. Judicial review of environmental determinations may be subject to a shorter timeframe period for litigation. In certain cases, 30 days following the date of final decision. All right. And now on to communications, commission communications. I do want to say, although I was not present for the January 17th Planning Commission meeting, I did listen in at home, and I was sad to hear that Senior Planner O'Connor is moving on, but I want to thank her for her service. All right. Staff communications?
None this evening. Thank you, Chair.
Are you sure you don't want to say anything? Nothing? No, just kidding. All right. Well, thank you, everyone. Is there a motion to adjourn? Vice Chair Hauser?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second? Commissioner Ferguson?
A second.
Motion and a second? Please vote.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.